Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Regularly scheduled meeting to order. We have an agenda here and actually I might recommend we, I guess I can go to the end actually. It doesn't matter because then you can get out of here. I would recommend we add executive session to this after Roman numeral eight to talk about personnelists. All right. If we could do that.
Sure.
And with that, I'd like a motion to accept as amended.
So move.
We have minutes from the December meeting, but there's only three of us here. And so we are going to postpone approving those until Matt's here either later today or at the next meeting. So we're going to delay that. Open it up for public comment. Since we don't have a public, we're going to move on. Correspondence, communications, I have none. I don't know.
There was none in the office. I heard there has been none.
I guess make sure we have in the minute, well, I guess it can come down below, but under correspondence, I got an email from a select boardman that said the town plan was approved yesterday. So at some point in the minutes, we ought to.
Oh, do you not know that?
No.
You mean approved, approved?
Yes.
By the voters of the town last, yeah. The Australian ballot yesterday was vote 95, 66.
Correct.
It was not unanimous, which is unfortunate.
That's okay. It's approved.
Yes, so no, we were discussing unofficially before you got here how we could do some PR to address the concerns of the people who voted against it.
Do we even know their concerns?
A little bit, I think.
Part of, that's a two-part question because yeah, the survey or some way to, we can talk about that. I agree completely.
But it is this celebratory moment and we should all bask in the moment.
Particularly Eric.
How many years?
It's been about 10 years now.
I was going to say.
Which really pulls the trigger on several things. There is money in the budget and I don't want you to jump all over the thing for, I think, I forgot, $400, $500 for that municipal planning grant. And the idea is the, we have to put up 10% of it and that's why you put it in there. I think we can get up to a $4,000 grant if, for example, the survey is what we want to do or something else. I don't know the protocol, just because it got voted on yesterday, we're not done yet. It's still got to be.
Regional conformity and all that, yeah.
It's got to go to the Wyndham Regional Commission. They're the last step. They approve it. Is that correct?
Well, we have a town plan now.
Yes. So we've qualified.
Okay. And approved by WRC is the next step.
Right.
But we don't have to have their approval. Having their approval does facilitate the grant process that we're talking about. Since you had communications with staff people and they were pretty well on board with the way we wrote it, I would anticipate their approval. But that process is going to take probably three months at the minimum.
Yeah, according, two months is what Bill told me. It's just because it depends on when it gets on the agenda. It's like the first Tuesday or whatever every month is when they look at it. And so I don't know exactly.
They have to pull willing people together to be a review board of commissioners. They have to look at it. And then once they're done with that, that process, which includes a hearing back here in Grafton, usually they hold a hearing. Then it goes to a vote of the whole commission. So three months is like a, it's a hair scramble. This is, this is the fastest you're going to see it from them.
And what is the exact start date of this? When they approve it or yesterday?
Yesterday is when we have an official town plan.
Okay. Because it's what, it's an eight-year?
Yeah.
So is that years, eight years started yesterday or three months from now is what I'm wondering.
I think it's yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Either way, who's in charge of sending it to them?
I can take, make sure they get it again. Bill and I have, Bill Bennett, Bill Bennett?
Usually the select board sends it.
Oh, is that their responsibility?
Actually, yeah.
You're right. Officially it is a select board.
The select board didn't approve, the voters had final approval authority, but I guess it still is the.
The select board.
Yeah.
So Bill will be the conveyor of it.
And yeah, it's a good thing that we won't likely need to go the municipal planning route because the request for $2,000 from the Plan Commission, the additional $2,000 for the next year's budget did not pass.
Oh, okay.
The select board scrub.
Oh, okay. I've heard that one.
Yeah.
All right. So do we have some final numbers? If approved, what they are then?
Yeah.
Next year?
Yeah, I'll accept that $2,000, which my understanding was based on, that was specifically to support the community planning survey that we hope to execute. It's going to, that was the recommended consultant retention fee.
I think so, yeah.
And you know, I pitched, I explained that and then I pitched, you know, the option of possibly breaking that down over the next four years, just 500 a year, if that would be more palatable. Still did not fly.
And what was the objection?
Um, it's just a very tight budget. We've had unforecasted increases in other places. You know, the cost for our computer security, for example, had more than doubled.
So we could still stand up at town meeting and make a motion?
That, that's an option too. Also the, another organization in town did make a request, not as much as for $500, the library and then the library and board, the head of the board both showed up at the budget meeting and that may have given it some extra weight. And again, it was a smaller amount. So it was more palpable, easier on the select board. The $2,000 was a.
That was more than frustrating. I found those dates out a couple of days before and they were at 10 o'clock in the morning. Like someone was working for a living. That was a tough one.
But they didn't object to the job. They just objected to the money. So if we got the money somewhere else, they would support the job?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. It's just a type of, everything's going up, you know, salt sim, trucks, computers, everything, alarms, everything. Also trying to, you know, keep things as real.
Well, let's get back on this and we're actually getting back and talk more in depth about town plan and survey and such later and then we can maybe get a better idea of what we do and don't want to do. Very quickly, updates, Wyndham Regional Commission, anything to throw at us?
Energy Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. Be going to that.
DRB, you guys were getting out?
Oh, yeah. We had one hearing today that we opened for a minor subdivision, the state of Iva Fisher, which is continued until February 4th. Another two weeks pending proper notification of all interested parties. Then we have another one upcoming in February, in February, I anticipate, Hatton Lake subdivision minor. And there may be one other coming. Chuck, are you aware of, was there anything else in the queue as far as subdivisions that you were aware of?
In Hatton Lake, it's not even a subdivision. It's just work within a floodplain.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Nothing controversial or contentious or?
No.
Where's, where's the work? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know actually. Do you know?
Uh, I don't, I haven't seen.
It's got that big swamp, that trail number eight or whatever went through, it's in there or?
Floodplain.
Oh, floodplain, I was thinking of wetlands. Hmm. Up there?
When I find out, I'll let you know, Eric.
All right. Well, you're on the word village wastewater?
Okay. Um, we are still focusing on educating ourselves, getting smart on what the developments have been in technology since we've contracted for the last two studies with Otter Creek and Ty and Bond. The most recent one was, you know, about 12 years ago. So we want to educate ourselves on the subject that are experts as to state-of-the-art technology for wastewater and then concurrent with that, we're going to be doing, talked about reaching out to the public at large for educating people within the village pumping district who may not know, you know, the effect of garbage disposal on their, their septic system or other things that coming from municipalities that have water and wastewater, things that don't work as well with a private well and a septic system, especially in a congested area. You know, second homeowners and people moving in from municipalities that have those, that infrastructure, we want to educate them. And then as we move on, also educate the public on the, the risks of, of not having municipal systems, the risk to property values should there be a catastrophic event, the risk to economic development, the potential for stagnation. You know, we've seen two of our largest employers in town move out of town because we don't have the infrastructure to support McGrath and Cheese and Blank Hill specifically have had to relocate elsewhere to expand because we don't have that infrastructure. So these are things that we need to make sure are part of the information and education that we get out to the public as we present the options for, for either water and/or wastewater within the village.
Any kind of timeline or plan like, you know?
No, we don't have a fixed timeline.
Okay. Just keep moving forward until you're ready to take some kind of vote, I assume would be.
Yeah. Yes. And it'll be ultimately up to the, the public to vote any expenditure of funds on such a system. And you know, in, in the past, I mean, it hasn't gotten very far because the, the price tag is prohibitive.
My perception is the two choices are either only the village pays for it, which would be.
And that's an option.
Unbelievably expensive. So they're not thrilled with that. Or the whole town pays and those town people are like, well, I don't live there, why am I taking?
You've got 90% of the town that doesn't live in the district that is not going to be as inclined. And that's why the education is an important part. You know, we, we risk, you know, property values collapsing in the village. If there is a catastrophic event, businesses closing down, no business is coming into town. Even if, you know, we maintain the status quo with, you know, through village pumping ordinance and good habits, you know, we have no issues. We're still limited as far as economic growth and development.
It'd be a tough sell, you know?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
You guys have been tracking Saxons River?
That we've been locked?
Tracking Saxons River, they had the major upgrade in their system, effectively rebuilding their entire sewer.
For the village.
Yeah. And I, yeah, and I don't fully understand it, but I get it on the periphery with somebody's trying to downzone. They talked to me and they talked about, you know, the economics now of with this issuance of the bond and paying off the debt and it really falling on a small consumer base and what that means for individuals whose, you know, their rates have tripled by group levels. And there's no indication that that's going to slow down, that in fact.
20-year bond kind of thing?
Yeah. So, and I have just very vague understanding that it's.
But they have water and wastewater Saxons River?
Yeah, but the main issue was the wastewater plan. It was a meeting standards. And so they, it sounds like they basically rebuilt the whole thing.
How long ago?
Last year.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't even aware of it. And that's part of your research is all of that. You know, we're near looking at finances yet. That's way down the road you're trying to figure out.
Right. And then, right. And then that would, you know, depend on technology that's available. And then again, ultimately it's the taxpayer, the voter that is going to decide.
Is, maybe you don't want to show your hand. Maybe your opinion or the group leaning more towards water, towards wastewater, a hybrid of little of each?
We're not taking, we're letting the facts guide, guide us.
You're not starting already to say this one looks better? I mean, it's not.
Well, um.
Not an emotional thing, which is what you've seen so far is one.
Common knowledge is from, for most people, you ask most homeowners, if people want their well water, they could care where their crap goes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And if you can go away from their well, so much for the better.
But they like the well water, so.
So I assume that's going to be the prevailing sentiment if there's a choice. I mean, no one is anxious to taste the municipal water, you know, when they've been on well water.
Well, as you say, the facts should contain the story.
Right. And, but we're not taking position, the facts are going to guide us. But that, most people though, if given a choice, they would choose wastewater.
Never thought about it, but now you say that.
Water. Cause even my kid who puts ketchup on everything can taste the difference between bones, falls water and Grafton water.
Fair enough.
No offense.
Don't knock BF Cole. I don't like BF Cole.
All right.
Have a well too.
We'll switch gears, but keep the same presenter, select board. Who do you got to present?
Um, well, just some people are way, it's, it's public now. There was an article in Vermont Digger about.
Cambridge Port.
Cambridge Port, what was we call the CIC building, a chemical mixing company in there that has been operating? Yes. So that, that is the, the most concerning item for the select board at the time is.
Don't give an update. They're shut down for now? Is that what I read?
The, the fire chief has and health officer have the authority to shut it down. We're trying to get the state agencies to perform their, their oversight. There is, um, correspondence going up to the state from the, the select board to the highest levels to try and get the attention. We need to make sure that the things that need to be done are being done, that the materials that are in there are removed properly and safely through, is it a clean harbors or safe harbors?
Clean harbor.
Clean harbors. As opposed to being hollow in a U-Haul to, you know, as those.
So it's not an intention for them to just get an inspection and say, look, we're actually following code. We just forgot to do some paperwork and went back up to speed.
I don't see that happening.
No. Your quick answer.
It needs to be.
Yeah. Why don't you just read the Vermont Digger brief article?
Okay.
I had to work with the fire marshals today and they brought it up. They put a cease and desist order on that business. Basically you can't mix chemical again until we figure this out. And the long-term goal is, yeah, just to relocate it to someplace more suitable.
Van in a back alley.
Probably affect of regulations, there is that.
Yeah. The operation has been completely under the radar.
Standalone company there or part of a bigger corporation?
Just standalone. Doesn't even have a website. It's off the radar.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, no, that, that's the hot item. Then we are getting into a close to town meeting, so deadlines for petitions coming up of if anyone wants to run for any office.
Yeah, deadlines, next week?
November 17.
Oh, it's Friday, I think.
It's coming up.
All right. Going back to our town plan, I believe the select board actually has to request the WRC to review, to approve. So that would be perhaps as our emissary Chris could.
Well, I actually had the PDF open that had all those steps. And so it's actually open back in my, at my house. So I'll look that up and whatever he says, I'll make sure. And again, I'll correspond directly with Bill and Joe together at the same time to make sure everything's going right.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. If there's nothing else under that, we'll actually switch officially to the town plan under unfinished business. You know, so I put this together, I have next steps, plan for updating, editing, improving the plan, including a timeline. And I put down, I've talked about it before, some kind of chapter, chapter design template. I, I guess I'll start with some comments and I go back to the survey and we'll talk about that or something. We worked for, and I'll use the word years, to split hairs to try to find consensus. You know, and even through much of the hearings, there was, in my opinion, a little bit more of a, a pull from, if you want to say, one side of our town from the other. And then at this informational meeting, like the whole other side of the town showed up and nobody showed up from the other side. It was kind of a, a strange dynamic to say the least. And boy, they had questions and concerns and, you know, it was all about the map and it was land use and, you know, where did the coloring come from and how come mine's white, yours is red, yours is blue kinds of things. And so I apologize to the camera and everybody else. I did not know that I was going to be the center of attention at that. I thought I was just going to sit there silently and it was going to be an informational meeting and we're going to go on. So I did not have anything prepared. So a lot of it was off the cuff. So.
Was that recorded? Did you just say there was a camera that day?
Was it a camera?
That's what you said.
No.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
Somebody else told me something like, Dave doesn't think we need a town plan anymore. I'm like, I'm very sure that's not what he said.
I would have said that. I said, hey, there's, there's a lot to having and not having. And I guess that will lead to right where I want to go, which is take a breath, regroup. And I got a couple of handouts. Let's go with that. I did talk to Bill. This is a print from my plan that I did when they were working on it. Bill is going to print six copies of the official final town plan, one for everybody at this table. So we have an official town plan. You can throw half of your bag out now, I think. So that's that piece. The next thing, and this is maybe my reaction to the questions that came up. And again, I'm maybe overreacting, but you know, what is the purpose of town plan? Maybe that's where Dave Culver says we don't need the town plan. Well, um, not every town has a plan.
Right.
And so what I did was go back and try to answer for myself, why do we need a town plan? What you've got here, I would like you to file somewhere as a reminder cheat sheet. And it's from two different sources. You can take a minute and read it. The first two thirds of it is from the municipal planning guide. And I put the website there from the state level. And I took that 20-page document and I cut and pasted the big important points, starting with it's, you need a plan, it's necessary too, and there's your reason, we can't forget that. The next section is can, because everybody says, oh, it's got to be a visionary statement. Actually, I think it should be, but there's no rule that says it has to be. You know, and so let's be clear what the town plan is and what it's not. That's what I'm throwing in there. I threw in the state planning goals there and I did not print all 10 of the criterion that all Act 250 reviews go through, but there are 10 and I printed the 10 one. And that's all I could find is what it says there is, is in the conformance of with local or regional plans, I didn't know, is if our plan was not approved, the regional plan would basically be the one that they look at if something was Act 250 in our town. All right. Just a minor point.
Makes sense.
But I wanted to throw that in there, that that's what it says. I will go on to say there was a reality I was not aware of as I read more into this and what it said, and I want to make sure I get this right because I don't have it in front of me, was basically, yeah, your town plan, if you have one, then becomes a, a standing point for Act 250. But if you're a tiny little town, you probably don't have the clerical and, and resources necessary to bother with it. Cause you need somebody up in my pillar a lot and, and just, that's a resource that most small towns don't have. So the fact that we have a plan now and we do have standing is great. They talked a little bit in a couple of documents I read about, the reality is, you know, you need some money and some resources, which, who is it with Lowell Lake? They're probably using their resources. If you know, there's an issue with Lowell Lake and that's London Dairy?
Yes.
You know, and I'm sure that's Act 250 and so forth. So anyways, the other thing, the last question, starting on the third page is required elements of the town plan. There's a lot there and I apologize, but that is from the Wyndham Regional Commission's 20-page rubric that we've been using to verify that our plan is still good. So those are the things that they say we need. So as we start to edit this plan, and I always kind of joke about when Joe got kind of upset with the new plan and said, let's get, just get rid of the word fluvial everywhere. It's a silly word. Get rid of the word fluvial. And this was one of the public hearings and Bill went through and said, oh, the notes say from the Wyndham Regional, we can't take fluvial out. Okay. That's kind of what this is for, to make sure we have the right stuff in as we start making our edits. So that's that piece for your information. The next one is maybe an introduction to where I want to go. You know, you just had a review board and I got hit by several people saying, you guys are going to meet and change that map tonight, right?
Yeah.
I, I don't want to have them think that we're going to take 10 years, but I don't think we're going to get that done and then do nothing else. It's, I sit at that meeting and unless, we'll do what you guys as a group want, I would love to set a goal about a year from now, have the amendment process go through. That over the next 12 months, and this is a starting point, this next handout, um, to review it. And if we come to review and a year from now, we say, you know what, we found nothing we want to change, so be it. But we got to look at it, I think now that the fire is out from underneath our feet. This is an extended table of contents from our plan. The one that's in the front of the book has only the chapter level and one level below it. I went through and added all the subcategories to give a more complete sense of the way this is laid out. And I would like to talk about tonight to start with, the idea that I've heard from multiple people, and again, it wasn't official because they weren't here, but I've heard it a lot, that our document is not readable. And I am not an author, but one way to, I think, clean that up is make every chapter, I'm not an author, I'll use the word parallel, that there's some kind of flow that every chapter has one, two, three emboldened. The other thing that I want to point out there, you'll notice under each chapter, they end with goals, policies and recommendations. The numbers following are the numbers of goals, the numbers of policies and the numbers of recommendations. And I've talked about it before, that's the thing I'd like to work on, is to really, really reduce the goals to the point that they are at least somewhat realistic. You know, you look and you got four goals here and you got five goals there and you got two and, and three and you start adding them all up and there's a ton of goals down there. You know, it's policies. When I was on a school board, we had a total of 36 policies, ran the entire school board. I have just under housing, 34 policies that we recommend we implement. That seems like a bit much.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to put some color to what we had so we can step back and say, where do we go with this? And again, if the answer is nothing, so be it, but it gives a better sense of what we've got. So, I mean, any questions at this point and comments? I'll take a breath because I've been talking for a while.
I think your idea to minimize the goals pop, that, what was that chapter? Ended up redoing like four times, the chapter 12 or whatever it is. There was way, way too many, like, cause you would have to link them all and you get the sense of like, oh, we're in trouble here because this is, there's too many of them. More than most towns, you know, like we're, we just would just add that attitude, add it in, add it in, can't hurt to add it in. It was very weight.
And there are unfortunately, two types of goals that we need to include. One are the goals that the town wants and the other are the goals that are required if we want to have the amendment approved at the next level up.
We saw that in energy, energy.
That's the one I was thinking of. They told us what the four goals were. Well, I would not recommend that we drop that to three goals, whether you elect the four or not. It is a good example of that.
It was natural resources or something. We were connecting like 24 recommendations to various state goals and it was, it just was a time sink.
And I guess tonight, the one thing I would like to do is to, from you, give me a definition of what those words mean. And I'll tell you right now, I went through Webster's dictionary. A, a goal is the end towards which efforts is directed. There's their definition. I don't have a problem with that. But what are the policies? You and I had a discussion one day and your vision or view of what a policy was, was different than mine. They put it down, a definite course or method of action selected from among alternatives in light of given conditions. That sounds like the, how you're gonna meet your goal kinda statement, is that?
Yeah.
What a policy is to you guys?
Read that again?
It's got a bunch here, I took the first two. A definite course or method of action selected from among alternatives, and in light of given conditions to guide and determine present and future decisions. A high overall plan embracing the general goals, accepting procedures, especially of a governing body. I will say that the Wyndham Regional, and I didn't bring a copy of it, the Wyndham Regional Plan has what I think sound more like policies than I'm used to. They have recommended policies, and they're written in the terminology in the way I've normally seen policies through my experience on the education board, so. And then you got recommendations, and if I knew what those three words mean, I'd be more than willing to start by going to the end of every chapter and moving stuff around into where they belong. Because right now, we've got goals that look like recommendations, and we have recommendations that sound like policies, and I think just rearranging them will eliminate some duplicity and help clarify that, so.
Well, goal would be the end state, you know, what you're, you're after. And the policies are what are gonna get you, the methods, the practices that are gonna get you there.
Oh, that's more procedures.
I would say that the policies are more of a strategy. And the recommendations are actually the real tactics to get there.
See, you and I went to the same school, because those are the terminology I totally get and understand, is goals, strategies, and tactics. Because that's, in the management world, there are some very definite, that's a model of.
Whereas if this board said it's our policy to grant preferred status to any energy provider, renewable energy that wants to situate themselves, you know, obviously the state gravel pits, but for us, prime ag land, as long as it can work around, you know, we, that, Joe Taxpayer knows that that's a policy, if I present a proposal to the town, they will support that based on their policy. They have to support it.
But see, even that, again, policy means a powerful word. Does the select board have a policy manual? I know the school board does. And it is law, I mean, it is the law that supports the state rules, and it's one of those silly books that sits on a shelf until something goes wrong, and that's what every lawyer pulls down, it's in the policy manual, it's got that level of authority, if you will. Versus, I don't think our policies have any level of authority, is that? Other than, you know, Act Two Fifty deference and that kinda stuff.
I mean, we have the policies that require that, like, sexual harassment.
That's, that's what I, those are policies from where I come from. There seems to be a different definition than that.
Yes, a different application.
All right. I guess we gotta think about it some more. If we're going to go through this and have something a year from now, next month, we need to do something. One logical approach is to choose a chapter. Check it off and say, good, we all looked at it, we edited it, we made no changes, we made changes.
Could we do something not controversial?
Because the problem is, the first chapter is chapter two, land use.
Yeah, how about we do something easy? Seriously, just to get our feet wet.
And feel this about it?
We did this in the hospital, you know, like, we picked something easy first to do compliance with some federal recommendations and policies, and so I think, what if we just slip to three, just off the top of my head here? Well, that's tricky too.
Transportation?
Recreation?
Yeah, either of those.
Transportation is one of our strongest chapters, that's a, it's a very good chapter.
Okay, I, well.
That's pretty tight and dry.
That we start, you're talking about chapter five, roads and transportation? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's a strong chapter, I don't think it's controversial.
And so we wanna look at that as a, are things in the right category?
And it's a good starting point, because it's not controversial. I will say, and I'm okay with that, we have a motion, we have a second.
Can you repeat the motion?
Maybe we start off with chapter five as something, or something similar that's less controversial, so we get kind of some practice.
Are we just focusing on goal policy recommendation, or the entire chapter rewrite, or what is the?
Organization of the chapter, right? To organize the chapter, make sure it's, that the chapter organizations are consistent, to use it as a model.
And I like your idea, because it's a clean, simple one. It's a good test without going into the deep water to see what kinda problems we're gonna run into without something controversial. So the answer is the entire chapter as a unit.
Yeah, I mean, each chapter's gonna be different, I mean, like with the energy, there's gonna be so much that's stipulated that we don't have control, and that we have to.
See, and that's an interesting point.
There's not gonna be a one size fits all mode necessarily.
You're right. I would not recommend we change a word in the energy chapter without a lot of thought, because that was not developed by us, if you know what I'm saying, that was lawyered by somebody else. That's a very good point. I'm not recommending the land use chapter, but again, I said it before, I'll say it again. We had a certain contingency consistently show up all the way through December, and it was amazing, I didn't see any of them at the informational meeting, or almost none of them, I mean. And then there was this other group that were, you know, more about, you know, the general consensus, my perception was, by this group, we want the land use map to be one colored for the whole town. We don't care what color, make it critical, make it productive rural. But this idea, these arbitrary boundaries where mine's white and yours green, really had some people upset. Your perception?
I, it did.
Okay, as, I didn't realize that, I knew Al, and Al and I have talked about it before, I've tried to explain and convince him my point, he stuck to his guns, I respect that, I didn't know there was anybody else.
But that's where the, I don't know if you're here for the, but it was ninety-six, ninety-five to sixty-six. And a significant portion of the opposition centered on dissatisfaction with the land use map.
Yeah, puzzled about why they didn't come to any meetings to try to suggest changing that beforehand, that they were so concerned.
Was the idea it was zoning? Did they miss?
Well, it's sort of arbitrary on its face, and that's, that's where I think we get into trouble. To come back to the motion that's on the table, I'm certainly willing to go along with what Valerie is proposing, just to get the structure of the process ironed out. But this land use is what has got the town really concerned, and I think we should be addressing it. And I'm not, I'm not of a mind that the town has to be all one color. But where it is colored, it needs to have some really good depth and explanation for why we're doing it.
And. Why somebody else is doing it.
Yeah, well, BioFinder, for instance, is doing it, and I don't, I don't trust the macro approach of A and R. I wanna have some, well, I want their input, but I also want some biologists and other input into this, because from, from my perspective, the map does not work to what I see on the ground.
And we want the local voters to participate, that would've made it easier for us upfront, had we had that participation, so I think we should invite that.
Let's deal with this motion, maybe this discussion's part of that motion.
Yeah.
I think we need to then immediately talk about, if we, chapter two more than just, yeah, let's make it many. I think we gotta do more than just one meeting kind of approach.
My concern would be on the scope, just that it doesn't become as consuming as the town plan was, where that was everything, pretty much, for what we did, we wanna do other things.
Yes.
So if we can keep it contained, then yes. I would support that.
And so just, so if we say February for roads, we've got town meeting in March, we have some other stuff in March. One thought, and I think it was before we ran, the camera was rolling, that we discussed is, do we bring somebody down from A and R and do a very publicized, public meeting to talk about everything from Acts One Seventy-One, Acts Seventy-Seven, whichever, the, the, One Seventy-One, thank you, and BioFinder and all that stuff.
But at the same time, we need the people who got, foresters who live right here in town, make sure they're part of the discussion, and they don't come after the fact, you know, to deconstruct.
Right, so they could ask questions in real time, whenever people are here and they have questions.
And we have some extra pieces in WRC, between us and A and R.
Well, that's a good point, it would be nice to set it up at a time that people from both those groups.
Do a panel kinda thing?
Yeah, don't you think?
So I've got foresters, local, I've got A and R, I've got WRC, who else?
Aiden Lake, I know he's a forester.
I put in, he's the forester I thought of my sleep, but.
Al stands to.
Well, that's why I just, I didn't want just one.
And then just, just people with, who know, you know, I've arranged the land, Rooney Gibbs, and people who can, you know, speak to what's actually on the ground, because they've come to be.
So if we're gonna have an, gotta name for it, informational meeting, something of that nature, this room hopefully would be way too small for it, and we can do it, I mean, we'd do it at the home.
At the school?
If the school would be a logical place. We need an agenda, I mean, we need to invite these people, but they're gonna ask why, what are we gonna talk about?
Yeah, it seems like we need to formulate it a little bit by maybe asking them, hey, what have they done in other places? And what kinda questions have they been asked in the past? You know what I mean? And so maybe we're looking at April rather than March, so that we can, you know, really put together something that makes sense.
Right, and we get past town meeting too.
Yeah.
Some of the local A and R folks, one comes to mind, I believe she lives in Chester, Marie Kaduta.
Yeah, she's at Springfield too.
Yeah, she's Springfield office.
Yeah, so she's local, nature museum.
I think her expertise lies with watershed, and anything else.
Well, that is an interesting idea about the nature museum, see, that they have somebody who they would recommend to include.
Yeah.
Just trying to be inclusive, and even the Wyndham Foundation, do they have somebody who they've consulted with in the past at all? I'm just thinking, you know.
Yes, I doubt that makes sense, yes.
constituency, you know?
Somebody to talk about critters. Do people have a problem?
I think, that'd still be A and R, right?
It could be, or if there are local biologists, even perhaps, perhaps.
Because I remember going to one of these Devon Cutney, like, ten, fifteen years ago, that totally convinced me, oh, this is a weird way we're doing land use, and we could be doing this better, and, oh, nobody ever, you know, I didn't know that. You know what I mean? It, actually, it was eye-opening for me, so I'm thinking there will be other people who may be with more information, less threatened by the map, and more understanding about what's driving it, and/or how we could change it to still address their concerns after having heard that all this.
Right. Who would be an expert on Act One Seventy-One? Would that be someone from the A and R, Wyndham Regional, something else?
Wyndham Regional should be able to cover that.
What else drives the map from a legal point of view, not from what our opinions are? You've got Act One Seventy-One, what else? So then all the experts, or is that it, just the only thing that's driving it outside of what we want, is Act One Seventy-One?
Well, at least in terms of floodplains.
That's, that's not the map, that's a different map.
But the floodplains impacted the locations in the map, the lines on the map.
Yeah. Do we have any pro-development people on that list? I mean, there's the critter aspect, but if I had to guess why somebody might have an objection to the map, it would be a fear of the takings of my development potential, you know?
Al stands with you, the first one that comes to mind.
Okay, is that what he said?
Well.
So it was a, he was using that as an example, but he's not.
That's more complicated.
He's not a developer per se.
But for credibility's sake.
Freedom, freedom of landowners' rights is, I think, the best way to describe it.
Okay.
You know, that's, he's an advocate of, you know, zero zoning, zero land use rules, et cetera. Joe, all of a sudden, I've never heard him talk so passionately, but at this informational meeting, he got pretty serious about, he doesn't like it, and I don't remember hearing it from him, so maybe he would be one. Well, he's not an expert really, he's not.
He's somebody who is expertise.
Right, no, I agree, I wanna make sure he gets invited, because I got the sense that they feel a little snubbed that we don't invite them to more things.
Well, we should invite the select board, we should invite everybody.
Yeah, and, yeah, we should be having, I believe, one meeting a year, a joint meeting, wasn't that required by law?
I don't think so.
Select Board Clinic Commission.
It's a very brilliant idea, but I've been doing this forty years, that's what I've heard about that.
Let me see if that is an actual thing.
The only thing that comes close to that, I think the WRC is required to make an outreach at least once a year to us, as a town.
So in order to pull this together, we're gonna need the location, and the school by default is as good as anything. We're gonna need a date, the starting point would be to look at the town calendar, because there's dates that are obviously taken, select board meetings and so on and so forth. There's always gonna be conflict, that somebody can't make one, but we need that. I need an agenda, exactly, I mean, I, I am more than willing to call everybody up on this list, but they're gonna say, about what? I've got an answer for that.
Well, so, addressing land use controversies, right? That's what we wanna, that's really the issue.
And I think one of the first things I would like to do is, just call up the Wyndham Regional and talk about, we wanna do this, and what do they recommend, because we may not be the first ones to try something with this.
Yeah, that's a good point. And maybe we wanna pre-meet with them even next month, if somebody's willing to come from them, to talk with us a little bit, so that we're not unknowledgeable.
But if we could talk about this at, at town meeting, maybe just make a pitch there, just so the voters and property owners.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, we're talking about a date after that anyways, that's a really good idea.
There are two individuals, I can think of, WRC that would be good to come. John Bennett, who has a historic and deep overview of all of these topics, and one of their newest members down there, Margot Kia, who happens to be in charge of the natural resources, and she was one of the people present at the wildlife connectivity briefing that was given by state people down in New Haven, two months ago. So I, I think the two of them, either one or both would be very good resources to.
As you all know, I've worked a lot with John during this town plan, so my thought is, give him a call first and just have a phone conversation about it.
I think she worked for the nature museum for some time, yeah, here in Grafton.
That's right, yeah, I knew the name somewhere.
And then more recently, she's been with.
Main Street?
No, she's been working with something to do with watershed. Can't think of the organization right now, she was hired out of their employment. Connecticut River Watershed or something of that nature, she's the one that has provided the planting material for trying to make floodplains more secure. The only thing that comes to mind is Connecticut River Watershed, I think that's a different term. That's, that's where she worked for, she went to WRC.
Let me see the plan for a minute, one more point.
I just look at it like, oh man, we got one, this is awesome.
One more point that I wanna mention from the informational meeting, and I own this, I own it, I own it, I'm the one that did this, so I want to revisit this. The general question I wanna answer, but I want you to think about is, my process was, start with the Wyndham Regional definitions, I cut and pasted the main paragraphs in. There are more to those definitions, they have five or six pages, I narrowed it down to one. The only change I made was, and resource land, under resource lands, let me find the definition to make sure I get it right. I added the sentence, where is, what's critical? Resource lands can be actively worked and used, but future development should be weighed against the desire to preserve the area. I will repeat what I said at the informational meeting. I wrote that sentence, I added that sentence to add clarity because my understanding as I read resource lands from Wyndham Regionals was, I felt that was too restrictive. And I wanna make it clear, this is not a preserve where you can't build, you just need to be aware of it. The question that came up, that I didn't have an answer to, is, it says, it was, and it kept being asked of me at the informational meeting over and over again, who is weighing the development versus the nature? My intent was the landowner, but I didn't put that in there. And one change at some point is either to remove that sentence and then make it exactly the same as the Wyndham Regionals, or at least put into there, but future development by the landowner should be weighed by the landowner, something that, that clarifies who that is. That's my perspective only, but maybe the question I have is, do we wanna continue for now, at least, with the Wyndham Regional? Because there was some people did not like that we used the Wyndham Regional definitions. One question that was asked is, who else in our area of other towns use the Wyndham Regional? To the best of my knowledge, the answer is nobody.
That's right.
You go to Chester and they have their own definitions that I can't find anywhere else. I go over to the town of Wyndham, they have their own definitions that nobody else uses.
Why would you do that?
My logic was use the ladder system that goes up, but I, I don't know.
We supported you with that, just to be clear.
Well, so there are advantages when a state agency or some of that, of that nature comes down to making a decision on what we're doing here, and then looks to the regional plan and the terminology is the same.
That was part of my logic. But hey, why does everybody use their own?
Sometimes it's just, you know, historic inertia. The WRC stuff is, you know, that was, came on the scene about ten years ago. It was pretty innovative at the time, still is.
And that is one of the pushbacks I got, is what was wrong with the terminology on the old map?
Okay.
And maybe just that, it's what's wrong with the way we always did it kind of mentality, I don't know.
And again, in some towns you get concerned, you don't wanna change things, cause you'll be like, oh, I'm gonna mess something up that I don't, I won't find out I messed up until six months from now. So we just keep the old language, that way it's there. And then the WRC stuff, when we originally talked about it, it was to legitimize the land use categories. It was, these are people who are professionals, who have given it a lot of thought. We can take advantage of that.
Another thing to add to that, uh, the Wyndham Regional Commission, um, does have a land use category called critical resource areas, but they have not, on their mapping, designated it critical.
Have they pulled that out? Because the plan that I have, Bennett talked about pulling that out, but right now it's a subcategory of resource lands. They don't have it as a separate bullet.
Okay.
They say within resource lands are our critical resource lands. And that's another change. I forgot to mention, we pulled ours out as a separate, for clarity is why I did it. Um, and I, I will say it again, I think, I go to the Lowell situation. The areas that we chose as critical resource, I am having second thoughts on. Al brought up the example of Turner Hill. Does that mean that the state or the Wyndham Foundation who owns that can't remodel that building? Well, when you read it real tight, it says, no development should be done in critical resource lands. The answer to that is yes, that, that's what it says. Now, that's not, was not my intent, is to say they can't do that. I don't have an answer for that one. Except for eliminate critical resource altogether and just, you know, cover those areas green. Those lands are owned by the state. It's not like they're gonna put up a, you know, a big ten-story building there, I don't think. Maybe.
On the other, other hand, there are perhaps very limited, uh, areas within town that are not part of state ownership, where critical resource might be applied as a pocket of some kind of, um, critter or plant that needs to be protected. And I, I think that might be legitimate. I do.
What we've got now in that color are the Duran State Forest, the Rockingham Town Forest, the Putnam State Forest, the Village Park, Molly Bay, Turner Hill, and the three streams that, um, they're, they're not the Three Sisters, cause they're male names.
I, I have a hard time with the, the brooks in the, in Wyndham. And, um, I don't think we have that kind of jurisdiction over the state plans, our own town, town lands. What if we wanted to do something to repair or add on or whatever to, um, some structure or something within one of the, like the town park or? Are we gonna be restricted there? I think, I think we need to have a reason for designating something critical.
Mm-hmm. Well, going to that section. Our key sites that are particularly sensitive should be given maximum consideration for protection. And though there is no specific zoning regulation or ordinance prohibiting development on private land, it is the expressed desire that the, of the town that no development occurs on critical resource land. That is our definition.
Doesn't say no use, it says no development.
Correct.
And, uh, I don't have a problem with that definition. I just have a problem with it being used as broadly as it was on that map.
So leave the definition, but shrink the, the pink, if you will. You know, I gotta go back to the longer definition of resource lands. Um, and again, you know, it, it touched me. I took great pride in, in my name and who I am, and I tried to do things honestly. And I got accused that I colored this map to benefit me. They say, look where the map ends, right on your property boundary.
Oh, yeah, that's a bit, sorry. We all backed, we all backed on all of this, I think.
Well, the, we didn't start with a color and then create a definition. And this is why it's gonna be important as we go to the community, we know what we want. Cause, you know, some people have said, I want all the same color. Great. If we use the word resource land, it defines things, slopes over twenty-five percent. Well, do we make those resource, or do we say, no, we're not gonna use that definition? You can't have it both ways. And that green that we see is colored based on the definition, right? The definition, it said large, now here's where you come in. Large forest blocks, we call it the bio finder, it shows us where the large forest blocks are. That's what Jeff did, was simply overlaying that large forest block. Now, if the definition says large forest block, doesn't that have to be green? Or do we say, no, we're gonna come up with our own large forest block? We disagree with the state on this, and we're gonna draw our own boundary of what we think large forest blocks are.
And I think that's legitimate.
It is, you think so? I would've thought you'd say you can't do that.
I would use the state as a starting point, and then figure out, because the reason for the designation of those large forest blocks is to facilitate animal passage, more than anything else. And if we can define where they can, uh, where, where we can make the, the connections between them, we can perhaps make a, a much more, um, targeted approach to, um, keeping the, the critters happy with going from one place to another, without just likeading the entire town, which is, if you look at, if you look at the, um, WRC's version of the large forest blocks, which I think you've got off the bio finder.
They actually have more of a vague.
Yeah, well, it's just like a blog.
Right, yes, yes, it's very vague in theirs.
And, and it's not justified, because, uh, you don't need that much, uh, overlap and coverage to make the critters happy going from one place to another.
It goes back to getting somebody from A and R that can give some more expertise directives on that, so. I, I'm not sure what the answer is. And even when I read these, you know, what's the big difference between resource land and productive rural?
Thank you, I was gonna ask, why don't you, we switch to like productive rural?
And just make the whole thing white.
If it's, if, you achieve a lot of the same objectives, I think, without some of the sensitivity.
Productive rural includes, rural includes forest lands, active agriculture lands, sand gravel, mineral deposits, and high-value forests and agricultural soils that, when in productive use, contribute to the working landscape and have significant economic value.
That would be my preference, to see much of the town in productive rural and have splotches that, uh, represent, uh, the critical resources that we, I, I'm sure we have in town, but they're, they're pretty small.
And, and eliminate the resource lands altogether, is that what I hear you say?
Not necessarily. Um, but productive rural land be the, the majority rather than the minority. Um, I, and I wanna see some between the forest blocks, however we want to, what category we wanna put them into, the connection where we know, um, animals will pass, and, and try to provide for that. Actually try to get public support for purchasing those avenues where they can go.
I'm a dreamer.
Well, that's the idea of buying easements along the streams.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's a legitimate public concern. It may take some education, but, uh, I think we have to, uh, figure out how to do a balance job, and the balance is between people being able to use their land the way they want, and at the same time, living with all the flora and fauna that also occupy the, the land around here. It can't be one, all one way or the other. And right now, A and R and WRC, life has to be a, a forest preserve. Uh, I just don't agree with that.
And we need to be able to explain to property owner here who has fifty wooded acres, and the property owner here who has fifty wooded acres, why they're not the same. It's a small distinction, but if you start with, everything's productive rural, and then say, if there's an argument for elevating it, then you do it. But the default becomes productive rural.
I like that.
In, in that term and down that then, and I'm reading more about what we define as, what the Regional Commission and us define as resource lands, and it goes back to that, um, bio finder, identifies the high priority connect, connectivity block, um, and high priority interior forest block. That's their definition. And there is a map that has that exact layer. Do we change the definition? Do we not use the bio finder? Do we keep using an individual from A and R saying, well, you know, that, that's not exactly what we meant, or something? You see the conflict of, I don't actually how to resolve that.
Well, if we could invite, um, you know, local people who have on the ground expertise in history to be another set of eyes, to verify the accuracy, so I'm not convinced of the accuracy.
I was just thinking, we need more expertise before we start actually wordsmithing, you know? I have either good brainstorming ideas, but I don't think we gotta make an actual vote or anything until we have a lot more expertise from the town and the experts.
And the big question, I don't know where the line is, is, you said it earlier, we got the sense that the plan as written will probably be approved by the Regional Commission. How much of the map can we start to alter, go away from things like meaning Act 171 before they say, no, that's not an acceptable map?
That's the question right there.
Work with them, as we go, it's a collaboration.
Yes.
Okay. All right, this question needs to be asked. All right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Sorry about that.
So can I have this on the floor?
Yes, absolutely, but I don't want to forget your motion.
And I may, Chris second it.
You okay with that? To have the theme of the transportation chapter with the goal at the next meeting to focus on that, there's gonna be a lot of distractions, cause there's a lot of other things to do, but to review that and see if we can make that to the level that a year from now, we'd be proud to go to the town and say, we've edited, here are the reasons, and this is what we wanna do. There may be no changes.
As, as a template for.
Yes.
Change.
Okay.
Yeah, or for consistency, not even change, but for consistency.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we're gonna focus on transportation, and we'll try and get, make sure we all have that, and we know what we're talking about there. All right. Anything else under town plan for now? I'm gonna try to put this together in my head and write it, so we have a summary of it. A village center designation, I have it written next to that, but my motivation is going right through the roof now that we have a town plan. Uh, my plan immediately getting that checklist out, getting hold of Wyndham Regional, uh, getting that stuff done, making sure they have the map done. Even to the point that in the next several months, March, I may request a special meeting just to deal with village center from us and get that checked off. Would we do this? Could we do village center? No, Wyndham Regional has to approve before we do.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so I will still move forward with it, because we know that end is coming.
Yes.
But I don't have to get it done as fast. All right, okay. Survey. What's your fiscal year from when to when?
June, June to July. June, it ends June thirty, begins July first.
We put in this fiscal year's budget money for a matching municipal planning grant, not next year's. We might ask for it again next year. In fact, we might've asked for it with the idea that we may not have a plan, so we wanted that much money. But we might move forward with this, and I can trick into that, we may not have time.
You're suggesting we can't use money that is from this current year's budget, and we don't have to care about what's like we're voting.
I didn't bring a budget with me, but I'm pretty sure we requested a line item specifically for a matching municipal grant, and I will look into that. I did some work. Because I got off on a tangent, so I'm gonna show you where I got, and I'm not even sure where to go with this, but I'll tell you where I'm at.
I don't even know how to explain what I've done.
I wrote a whole survey. Well, I didn't, but I did, cause I started playing with it, so I'm gonna pass out what I got, and then I'm not even sure where to begin on this. At the last meeting, and to honor what we said at the last meeting, we were gonna look at three different things, and what do we wanna know? So my charge was to bring all of the, I got all these files, all these questions I brought together, anything dealing with land into one document to discuss what do we wanna know about land? Another one just about energy, and another one just about water, wastewater. So to do my homework, because I'm a good student, here is.
Oh wait, where was economics and economic development about?
For tonight, we didn't discuss talking about it, for, for the survey.
So you're not opposing limiting the survey to those three?
Well, no, 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 no. We just said, we, we, we're all over the map at the last meeting, let's choose specific stuff, but I'm leading to something. I promised these, so that's land. These are the questions that I found, they're not in any order, they're not formatted. I just cut and pasted all sorts of stuff on wastewater, but I wanna make sure you had this, cause you'll see where I'm going. I did the same thing with energy. Now we're gonna face reality. If we put a survey together and put every one of these questions in, we're not gonna get a single one back.
True.
All right? So I went to the survey, and I started saying, what really matters? I cut out way too much, but what I have here is a draft of a survey, and it's only at the point to where the football game ended last night. It's not like, yeah, that's good, let's send it to them. Football game ended, I saved and shut it down, so it's, it's a work in progress. I'd like to talk about this tonight a little bit. I'd like to talk about this tonight a little bit. I'm about to pass it out, but you've got a bank of questions because Eric wants questions about transportation, and we got like fifty of them, but I only put a couple in. You know, and you want questions about water wastewater, but we got fifty of them, and I only stuck a couple of them in. And I wanna explain my logic and where I'm going.
We tell people that, so you only have two questions per topic.
And I'm closer to that. One of the things I decided that I want to recommend strongly, based on the work I've been working on this on, is to have zero online option for this survey. I was the one advocating for that. I started, well, you'll see this, because how do you do this online? First of all, to have it in two different formats, I think could be a real problem. Secondly, we only have a maximum of six hundred people, you know, if we had ten thousand going online, it would make a lot more sense. If, and so this is a format, it's not done, I don't wanna vote yet, do it, it's, it's not that. It's where my head was at as of twelve thirty-seven last night before I went to bed. All right? You'll notice I got it divided into three, four sections. What I'd like to do is go over, you'll notice it seems to me, if it's in paper, this will work. Now, this is like seven pages, and I cut a lot of questions out. So tonight, I want you to go and say, wait a minute, that wastewater question's important, et cetera, et cetera. Section one, this comes from Chuck's Rockingham thing.
That's guy I recognize a lot of.
Yep. I liked that, the open-ended, three words, and then two more questions. There and there, what are the assets and challenges? Um, tell us what you think, put it in writing. The formatting's not there, there's a lot of work, I'm gonna kinda run through this. Section two is the factual questions. It doesn't have to be in this order, but you'll see, those are all non-opinion questions. I started by eliminating any questions that I felt could be gotten from another resource. If there's a database out there already, then to ask if we need to make this as tight as possible, it seemed like we shouldn't put it in there. I will say the negative to that is, we cannot do cross correlations. For example, I took out the salary, how much do you make per year? Well, we can get that information elsewhere, but we won't be able to dovetail other answers with this one and see what connections there are. So, um, there's a win lose on that. The third section is all opinions, and you'll notice they're almost all grids. Um, I'd like you to take a look at the questions on those. They're not in the best English format, but I was trying to eliminate a lot of duplication. There was a lot before when I was looking at this. Um, each one, you'll notice, has several blanks at the bottom of the grid. That's for us tonight, to say, hey Dave, you should put this one here, this one here. Also, you'll notice, I want to have them end with, and I didn't do it on all of them, maybe they shouldn't be. Um, but if you look at twenty-seven, for example, and several others after that, um, thirty has it, is other, with the idea that they can, they can add their own and put something. Those are the kinds of things I couldn't figure out how to do elegantly on a web style survey, to have it say the same message. So those are some of the reasons I went with this. Um, part of my rationale also was, if we had a municipal grant, we would develop the survey, and we spend the grant for boots on the ground to do a maximum implementation of data collection. I have no problem analyzing, collecting, organizing the data. I like data, that's fun for me, but if we, I, I'm talking hiring high school kids, that's how it takes, going door to door to get as many as possible. And then the last section is just one question. What did I miss? Tell us, give us any additional comments. So, um, that's a starting point, maybe?
That's great, yeah.
I, I think the boots on the ground are absolutely necessary to make a representative survey. Because.
It'd increase the number.
It, it will get the required cross-section of our population. Lots of people, uh, like to render their opinions and sit down and, I don't know, maybe they don't have a mortgage to pay. And can work on surveys for a couple hours, uh, and think about their answers in very detail and love to have their opinions known, and they'll fill out surveys. And other people who are.
Working twelve hours.
Trying to get the kids out the door and, and put the lunches together, are gonna say, oh, uh-huh, nice, nice, nice you're doing that.
I'll put in a pile of other things I have to do.
You get the knock on doors and ask people's, uh, permission to occupy their time for a few minutes and get answers from the entire spectrum of people in town. And then you'll have something that is truly representative.
Well, here's a great test. There's nobody more committed to this stuff than we are. If I gave you the homework assignment between now and the next meeting, go home and do this, would you do it?
Sure.
Not because I want your answers.
Yes.
But I want your emotional feedback, like, I got bored by page three.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair one. So do by the next meeting?
Yeah, just bring it to a discussion.
And we want us to mail it back to you.
I think the next meeting's fine, if you want some emails like with comments and stuff, so I can do some pre-prep for the next meeting, I think that'd be fine, but, uh, I guess what I'd like tonight is to look at the content and, and are there, you know wastewater, there's not a lot of wastewater stuff in there. You know, there's a section that's uncomfortable, that I don't like the way it is, and I don't have a better solution, but I didn't pull it out. And it's, how satisfied are you with, and it lists, it doesn't list people, but we're a small town. You know, services from your town offices, your town road maintenance. Well, hopefully, I personally would say wonderful things about Tommy, maybe not everybody would, but, you know, those kinds of things, so.
Are twenty-six and twenty-nine kinda the same?
Are they? Could be, again, it was still thirty last night.
Are they the same thirty?
Twenty-six and twenty-nine?
Yes, twenty-six and twenty-nine, I've played a lot of time with, I, I started cutting all of twenty-nine and putting it into that, but twenty-six, ooh, wait a minute.
There's two additional ones on the bottom of twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, it was a, it was a mistake, I was trying to, I was trying to figure out if I could put, I am a believer that we need to ask these questions about the energy piece. You know, and that makes a nice little grouping, and then you got cell towers, that was a screw up, by the way. I was looking if I could put those into, like, twenty-eight, actually, is what I played around with. But it didn't seem to fit, cause twenty-eight is really about economic development, business types, and that kind of thing. Um, so, yeah, that was just a screw up. You know, I started thinking, you can see on twenty-six, I started brainstorming, and it didn't end at cell towers, I said, you know, what about, somebody comes in and says they're gonna put a five hundred house development up on top of a ridge? You know, is, is that okay, commercial development, industrial development, et cetera? But, all right, so we're gonna make a plan, we'll deal with that. What should be in there that's not in there? Or is that it, that's all we should be asking? What should not be in there that is in there?
I think you're right, working through doing it ourselves.
Give us a better idea.
Yeah, trying to, putting that to the side and saying, do this.
Sure.
Send you back feedback if you have it, or review at the next meeting.
Two pieces of feedback, one is the emotional side, however you wanna put that, is it too long? Um, if you all come back and say, boy, that went fast, well, that would give me the freedom to say, well, we can add another page if we think that's appropriate. Um, but that length has got me very concerned. And then obviously, the second part is that content piece, is, you know, you really gotta ask more about whatever the area is you wanna worry about kind of thing.
Can we all just hit our stopwatch on our phone? So you hit your stopwatch, take your survey. Usually, orthodoxy suggests anything past five to seven minutes, you won't do. So if you just, just move it aside, hit it, and then start taking your survey and then see what you're, when you're done.
Don't even know the second, but yeah, is this a twenty-minute thing, a five-minute thing, absolutely would be helpful.
But some of the ADD people aren't gonna do it all in one shot.
And, and that's very true, yeah.
If we're administering it though, sending a kid in there, yeah, it would be there for five, ten minutes.
Well, yeah, it'd take longer, cause there'd be conversation then. So wait, back up for a second though, number six, you say, what year did you acquire your tract of residence? Just ask them if they even own their own home.
Well, I didn't know how to do that one originally, it said buy, but most of my family didn't buy their own, they just got it from, you know, the grandfather, whatever, so they acquired it, they didn't buy it.
But some of those people are renting, is all I'm saying, so I'm saying, do we wanna actually say, what year did you move into your home?
So here's the, here's the circular problem that we need to answer tonight, if we can answer this one question, it would be fantastic. Who is the survey for? Just taxpayers? Anybody that comes to visit? Second homeowners?
Right, and what about businesses? I remember them being really irked when they were left out of some survey, and I don't remember which one it was, who got surveyed here and went to residence and didn't go to business owners.
Matt mentioned that out in Rockingham, that he was not being asked his opinion.
Yeah.
And he was dirty, um.
I'd like you to please look at question four and eight together.
Well, so can we just add under four, yeah, like besides other, can we just offer something like, I own or work in a business in Grafton?
And there, would that be the third choice if they own a business in Grafton?
Well, it's the fourth choice, you have three other ones, right?
Right, but what's the third choice?
My primary residence is somewhere other. You're, you have four, three questions after number, in number four.
Right, the other is the fourth one, but the third one is, if I own a business, I live in Rockingham, wouldn't they choose the third one? But I own a business in Grafton?
No. No, I, cause you can, you don't have to own property to have a business here.
It could be renting the property.
Yes.
Yes. So how can we?
The guys with the antique store, the, you know, the store itself.
See, I struggled with this.
Yeah.
Piece, because whatever that answer is, is gonna define who this survey is for.
Right, so I just, you know, I was the one who said, oh, put it off, but I'm just looking at those two, but I'm like, well, we need more choices regardless. Cause I think we want anybody who has invested, interested in Grafton succeeding as a town.
Okay.
To weigh in here, so I think that includes, maybe it does include, I'm just visiting, but I visit regularly. You know what I mean? So do.
And we just gotta make sure that.
Put a stack of them in the library, just, you know, we just know to wait them, you know, by.
And it's another reason why I like doing handwritten, cause then we can.
Yes, go back and look and see which answers match which ones.
It would be a task, but it'd be much better collection of data, I think. Um, one of my concerns, and I'm not disagreeing with you, is many of these questions are based on you live here kinds of things.
Right.
We just gotta make it clear, it's only answer those that are pertinent to you kind of approach. You know, one of the things that Chuck has advocated for is the young people. Well, they don't own a home here, they live with their mommy and daddy, should they fill it out, and how do you, are they listed in this list?
Right.
To solve number six, you could say, what year did you become a Grafton resident?
I thought everybody's gonna be a resident. So they're gonna be second homeowners, they're gonna be business people.
Yeah, I.
Uh-huh. So I think you can say, what year did you develop a significant connection to Grafton?
Did you begin living here in Grafton?
Create a relationship with Grafton.
Begin, what year did you begin living or working in Grafton, how about that?
Easy or?
Number eight, uh, which statements best inspire you, because, um, perhaps more than one statement applies.
Is it possible?
It's possible for me.
I own work.
I both have my own business and I commute to a business.
So the two ways to do it is check all that apply, or use words like my primary work or something like that. But it'd be, it'd be better to check all that apply?
No, I don't think so.
My intent was it would be only one, but you have a very good point.
Uh, Chuck just pointed out to me, uh, question number twenty-three. People are not willing to know how many kilowatt hours they use in a year. Um, but they will have a vague idea at least of how much they pay monthly for their.
But you notice on all of them, actually, I don't know.
But they may have an idea of what they're paying for their utilities.
Eric, can I back calculate that? So if you say, I pay two thirty a month, or I pay fifty a month, we'll, we'll get pretty close to the kilowatt hour.
The only person I worry about is who's got a photo of the tax. That's a different answer than what they pay them.
That's right.
I don't know if that's one person or a hundred people in town.
So you have two columns, please check off what you use, no, I'm kidding, within the same question. How many either, you know, kilowatt hours you use or gallons you use, or how much did you spend in the last year? And if it's electricity, you should give them any back any year.
See, and like the grids on the future pages, I tried to take questions nineteen through twenty-three and do something, create that into one grid kind of thing, and I just couldn't get it together, it ended up being the five questions or whatever. Is that important? I mean, I put five questions on, just to figure out what, how you heat your home, I, I couldn't figure out how to shorten that down.
Well, yeah.
Well, it'd be the intent of, um, question twenty-three. Um, if, if somebody has, is off the grid, or if they're, um, supplementing their, their energy substantially with solar electric, um, wouldn't, wouldn't your primary concern be, uh, how they burden the grid rather than what they're doing personally?
So the cost is really what matters.
I would say.
I see what you're saying, yeah, I, I could say, yeah. That's a very good point, so maybe just put in the cost, and if they put zero, then, then, like you say, no burden on the grid, because they have everything from, what about the guy that runs a generator? There is a cost.
Yeah.
There's a few like that.
Are there some people out there running generators? There are a couple guys in Chester.
Really, I'll just back up, that's a primary source.
I have a cousin in Chester, it's all he does is run a generator, nothing else. Yeah?
His neighbor.
Oh, he's so far out.
No, there's no neighbor.
That's the way he has to run the generator, they can't run it.
I moved your mind all the way across the valley, yeah, sorry, I digress.
And maybe we're, we're parsing it too little, we're trying to get a picture, we're not trying to get such accurate data that we're down to the dollar here, whatever, to me, I kept thinking about trends and big picture kinds of stuff, not, you know, well, do we have thirty-seven people or thirty-eight people burning wood this year?
Well, you know, that's an interesting point then, about the solar panels. Can we add on a little subcategory there, after, you know, what heating sources do you use?
Which page, yeah, what number?
Uh, well, number sixteen, and, or, uh, do you plan on, uh, adding any of these in the next, I don't know, two to five years? You know what I mean, like, if we ask what they're doing right now, it doesn't tell us, oh, they've been saving up for solar and they think that's a thing, or, oh, they're planning on doing wind.
And again, kind of a two-column approach, one question with, what do you have now, what do you think you'll have five to ten years from now, kind of approach?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
There are questions you don't want to hear to look through this, I mean, is it important to know how many miles they drive? It's important to know how important they, when they pump their septic. Remember, there's a bunch of questions underwater, but I cut out.
Yeah.
There's a lot of questions in that bank of questions about water.
Why do we care if somebody pumped up their septic system if they're way out in the middle of nowhere?
I don't know, that's a good question. What do we wanna know from people about water and wastewater? We've talked about it, but what, without looking at my list, just off the top of your head, this is what I wanna know from, is it different from the village people? Or the people out in the woods?
That's fair. I think really what we're asking for is what's your vision of the town, not like where are you now so much, but is where, where do you see the town in five, ten years? What can we do for economic development for the town? What can we do to support you staying in town?
And these, this set of questions was to get a better profile of who the town is. But again.
But you point out, there's other data, there's other people getting that data.
Yeah, yep.
I think we're more interested in what do people want?
So on the digit side, you know, radically, you don't ask any of those questions, that would be, you know?
Honestly, where are we gonna do with that information? Honestly, where are we gonna do with that information?
I know, in energy, we wanna push the needle towards renewable.
Sure, but asking what they're doing now isn't gonna do that for us, right? And there's, somebody's got that on that, we saw some of it, I'm pretty sure, uh, somewhere along the line. Remember, we were reading in math, like, who had solar, and I'm like, oh, I'm not on there, uh, but almost everybody else was on there, that's older.
Well, then, without a vote, a vote, but a consensus, at least, we got five, ten minutes, very quickly, number four, do you wanna ask that or not? I mean, go, some of these I'd like to not get rid, but maybe you don't wanna any of them. I give...
I think we do wanna know who said what, to be able to match them up, not by name, but by, like, oh, all second homeowners are planning on having solar and...
Versus business owners versus full-time residents.
Right, but I think we wanna know, you know, what do you plan to do to address climate change?
So, so five would go along with four, that we'd wanna know that? Or not?
Do we really care?
I don't know.
Um, well, what's, is it something on the order of thirty to forty percent, second homes in Grafton?
I've heard no more than, this high's fifty, but I don't...
Some of the population goes from six-hundred to fourteen-hundred, doesn't it?
Really?
That's my memory.
I don't know, currently, no.
But again, I think there's people who's tracking that data, I think we wanna know, what's your vision of the town here? Right, isn't that where we're doing this?
It is.
I know it's a small thing, but I really like the fact that you changed question twenty-seven to say, should the town of Grafton invest bill of tax dollars? I think that was a flub on my part, in asking questions like that before, because we would ask, do you want to improve this without worrying about the money? Just kind of a detail, this. Yeah, I wouldn't change anything, because that was perfect.
Yeah, so, like, section three, I mean, makes total sense that we need to know this stuff.
Yeah. Sure.
Some of these were cut and pasted from others, others I randomly added stuff, so I don't know if this...
No, I was all over it to begin with, but now I'm just going, wait a minute, really, what we wanna know is, what do you want? Yeah. So, do we even need section one or two? I mean, are we doing with the fact that somebody who's under twenty wants something different than somebody who's over fifty? I don't know, maybe we are, I'm just, or second homeowners want something different than primary homeowners, or do we just wanna know, oh, you have some investment in town, so I guess we can still ask them what it is? But really, what we wanna know is, what's section, yeah, is section three?
Yeah. You do wanna tease out, how they respond, that was quite eliminating demographics and how they, the, the young in Rockingham had a very different view of what they wanted to see Rockingham be compared to the old-time residents.
And I love the objective section two being there, uh, it's interesting.
But questions four through eight seem like demographic questions, and then after that, it, it's, it's a little bit different, they're, they're more lifestyle questions, if you will.
So I'm just saying, why do we care if somebody's got flooding in their basement or pumped their septic tank, or had their water tested? I mean, in the village, I get that, that makes sense, I mean, we're trying to overlap the, the...
And that's what I did, honestly, was, what are the ones on water that the water committee might want? Hey, I didn't see making any correlation between, oh, your, your basement floods aiding travel thirty miles to work, kinds of things, it was more, here's, I was just planning, handing it over to you guys and saying, here's some information, I don't know what to do with it.
Well, then you need a question about...
Yeah, because it doesn't ask about the village.
Yes, I live in a village, in the village of, either the village of Grafton, Hopeville, or Cambridgeport, if you wanna, like, you know, question those a little bit, uh...
Do we wanna know? Have you guys discussed, because in the beginning, we discussed doing a survey, discussed it all since, we've kinda said, we're gonna do it anyways, or...
Right, we'd like to, um, be incorporated, if we could work together with you.
Okay.
And, um, and, you know, we could respect, you know, keep it to a minimum, but like, you know, in a separate sheet, each is great, you know, how, how do you think community systems should be funded, and you give an option.
You're looking at the wastewater question.
Well, what if you just moved all the water questions to another section that says, if you live in this area, this area, and this area, please also fill out this part?
Hmm. That, that would be simple to do in, in separate little sections, it's just for you guys in the village, kind of thing?
Yeah.
Because then we could ask a lot more questions.
And if you're mobilizing surveyors, then we have that mechanism. When you're in the village, you use survey A, if you're out of townwide, you survey B.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I, I think it is important that, um, you retain the nine through, um, twenty-three or whatever questions, uh, because transportation and heat are the two biggest, uh, contributors to our greenhouse gases and our energy use in Vermont right now, um, and they're what people are trying to figure out ways of attacking, uh, so knowing what that, what they ask the parameters of that are, is important, knowing, and, and that's what those questions will tease out, for my part. I'm not sure, I'm not saying that these are perfect questions for that, but...
But you want more depth on the energy...
Those, those two components of energy, transportation and heating, are ones that we really need to know a lot about.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, but I'm gonna push back even further, why do we need to know that? Why is that important for us to know?
That drives what we say in the energy chapter, and how, how we're going to attack, um, renewable energy, or however Grafton, if it takes responsibility for it, um, develops energy sources for itself.
Yeah, we become resources for efficiency in Vermont, to say, hey, look, we've got a chronic weakness with, you know, over-reliance on oil or whatever, and we need additional services to have you guys come in with the program, you know, we can attract more attention.
Not disagreeing, I get nervous about the length of this thing.
Yeah.
Because, again, those are some questions, I, I guess, and we're, we're out of time here, what I would like is a couple of things. One is for all you to do the surveys as stands, I mean, you're gonna, obviously, part of that will be judging as you do it, but be the person and do that. Two, if the wastewater committee, are you gonna meet between now and our February meeting? You don't know. I, I'm wondering if there's any way you guys could review that list of water questions I just gave you, and come back and say, here are the six that we care about, or even if you come back and say, we need all thirty-five of them, then we know where you're at, at least.
Okay.
And then for everybody to review with an eye of, of being productive, the survey I gave you, as well as the three sheets of other questions, so that you can come back and say, Dave, you need to add these four, challenge, why did you bother putting this in as we did tonight, and then we start adding subtracting to what we want. Thoughts on that? And I, my homework would be to start discussions about having in April, a forum on land use for the community. Date has not been chosen, um, I'll start with Bennett and those folks, and go from Anything else?
The municipal planning grant, um, we got one this year, sort of the feedback we got is, we need to be increasingly ready to show them, this is what we want. So this, this kind of material that we've produced, if we send it in the fall and say, these are the questions we're gonna ask, we've developed it, it's approved, you know, at the planning commission level, all we need is funding from you all to administer the survey, and it, it's gonna hit all their check marks for getting funds, so it would be highly competitive.
There's a good chance we'll succeed in doing the grant's goals.
And that's how we worked it, we said, as soon as you give us the money, we're ready to go.
Okay. I'll, I'll have a long conversation with Mr. Bennett, he likes to talk, we'll go down and have coffee with him, and we'll, we'll figure something out. Um, I had an agenda here somewhere, but I think we're winding up. There it is. Uh, so that's the community survey piece, uh, new business, is there any new business? Next reunion meeting is Tuesday, February eleventh, six-thirty here. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to go in executive session. So, so we are moving to executive session.